I call this meeting to order. Please join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First item on the agenda is a couple proclamations. I'll start with the Walk for the Heroes Appreciation Day. And join me up here. One of our councilors is on the, on my phone actually, so that's why we have the podium way up here. Whereas, the Walk for the Heroes is a community event scheduled for September 26, 2015, and the purpose of honoring the losses this nation suffered on 9/11. And whereas, the Walk of the Heroes is approximately 13.3 miles long, beginning at the Stevens Store in Hurley and ending at the Baton Park at Fort Bear. And whereas, the Walk commemorates Americans who died for our country following the 9/11 tragedy, including civilians, first responders, firefighters, policemen, and our armed forces. And whereas, the Walk also commemorates the Gold Star Mothers and families who've lost loved ones and struggle every day after the 9/11, after the attacks on 9/11. And whereas, the sponsors of the event intend to establish the James H. Pertle Scholarship Fund benefiting the Grant County, New Mexico Transition Center for Homeless Veterans. Now therefore, I, Michael S. Maronis, Mayor of the town of Silver City, do hereby proclaim September 26, 2015 as Walk for the Heroes Appreciation Day. Gentlemen?
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Good work, James.
Good deal. Do you want anything, have anything to say?
I don't, you want to, or? You know, I would just like to, I would just like to say that I hope you guys show up for the hike. It's only 13.3 miles, okay? But we're looking forward for the hike. We had over 120, 130 people last year, and looking forward to getting more people out there on the hike, and it is for a great cause. And any, any of the donations and funding is going to stay locally for the veterans here in Grant County. And I want to thank the Vietnam Vets. They're the ones that's going to be helping us out on not only their 501(c), they're also going to, we're going to have lunch after the hike. It's $20. You get a t-shirt, then you get a meal, and we will have some guest speakers. And they're also going to have a bike run. Hope you show up there, Jose. And they're going to have a get-together at the Brown Derby that evening.
And once again, here the Vietnam Veterans also, you know what? It's, it's good to see that they've asked for support, and we're willing to support any function that is acceptable to the community. And I think that they've created themselves a good relationship with the community that we're willing to support them as much as we can, and with all we have. Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Goodbye.
Yeah, you'll get the t-shirt. Yeah, and it's a nice t-shirt, and then after the hike, they have really good hamburgers and hot dogs, and then we're going to have like a little ceremony, and guest speakers, and so on. Thank you very much.
Thank you. We appreciate that. Thank you.
I'm sorry, have my back too. The next proclamation is for Day of Service. Is anybody here, Gary? Get over here.
Well, I'm dressed by him going to work. So glad you brought your attire there.
Yeah, I'm, we're, yeah, absolutely. Perfect, perfectly dressed. Whereas, Silver City is blessed with a vibrant and diverse religious community represented by many different faiths and traditions from across the world. And whereas, helping the poor and needy is a common thread that runs through the fabric of all religions, and given the levels of unemployment, underemployment, and homelessness across the nation, it is fitting to encourage interfaith community action to improve the circumstances of those struggling with the effects of the global economy, natural disasters, and other misfortunes, and improve the quality of life in our community. And whereas, loving kindness is the most valuable support to the well-being of those in need, and there is an abundance of opportunities throughout Silver City for citizens to take selfless action, such as volunteering at homeless shelters, food banks, and community agencies, enabling others to become self-reliant by assisting displaced workers in finding jobs, teaching financial literacy, and other life skills to the undereducated, and serving as mentors to at-risk youth and the underprivileged, and helping communities organize resources such as participating in food, clothes, and blood drives, or making charitable contributions to organizations. And whereas, many of our citizens have experienced hardships this year. It is important to call public attention to the continued need for charitable donations, hands-on community cleanup projects, and other efforts that will improve and enhance the beauty of Silver City. And whereas, it is important and proper to recognize days in which our, in which we are encouraged to make a concerted and united effort to care for the poor and needy, to give service, and to design projects where families and individuals can assist those in need and improve the quality of life in our communities. And now therefore, I, Michael S. Maronis, Mayor of the town of Silver City, Grant County, New Mexico, do hereby proclaim September 26, 2015 as Day of Service. Throughout the town of Silver City, and I call this observance to the attention of faith-based organizations, community groups, civic organizations, and all of our citizens to come together and perform service in our local community. And thank you for all you do.
Thank you.
Would you like to talk about what your, some of your plans are?
Which way do I face?
Um, the council is the most appropriate.
Okay. Mayor and council, thank you. As we received this through Governor Martinez and passed this on to the town, Mayor Maronis was very optimistic that this would be a great opportunity, I think, for the community to come together. We have identified with the help of Mr. Brown and Mr. Marshall, Mr. Peña, a number of projects that we hope that we can accomplish on that day that will benefit the town and will benefit those that you identified, some of those you identified in the proclamation. I think those in the community who would like to participate are certainly welcome to contact, Alex, do you want them to contact James, Mr. Marshall, or myself, so that we can coordinate as many and accommodate as many organizations who would like to participate as possible. So, thank you very much, Mayor.
Thank you. Next, on, next on the agenda is public input. I'll remind those giving public input that I'll give you five minutes, and since you're so close, should be able to give you a one-minute warning before that's up. I failed in the past as we have some distance normally. The first is Shelby Hallmark for C.D. Trail Vote.
My printer's not working, so I have to read from my cellphone. Hi, I'm Shelby Hallmark. I'm a Silver City resident, and I'm here to talk about this, which is the Continental Divide Trail is one of 10 trails that has been selected for a potential grant from the American Hiking Association Society and Michelob Beer for $25,000 if we win the election among those 10 trails. And you go out to this website here, superiortrails.michelob.com, and you can vote for one of the 10 trails. And ours is currently, this voting started about a week ago, and we're in second place. We've got 4,000 votes, or almost 4,000, and we're only a couple hundred behind a trail in Florida. And the 25,000 will come in handy, obviously, for helping with building and maintaining and publicizing our trails, and it's part of an ongoing activity, as you all know, of getting Silver City nominated as a, the first community, gateway community on the Continental Divide Trail. So this, this would be another feather in our cap if we can do this. The voting goes on until October 31st. So all of you in the audience, if you will continue to go out, you can vote every day. You have to be, you have to be an adult. No purchase is necessary, but you can go every day to that website and vote for the CDT, and we really hope you will do that. And that's about it. The other thing I wanted to say is that we all, the Continental Divide Trail Coalition, which is one of the groups that's helping us develop the Continental Divide Trail here, has been awarded a Vista Volunteer Position, which will start in November, and that person will be housed here in Silver City, and will be working on trail issues and other matters of that kind to move us forward for ecotourism, outdoor recreation for all of our own citizens, and for bringing people here to visit our wonderful access, our, our trails. So that's it. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
MichelobUltra.com.
Thank you. Next is James Fitzgerald, Silver City Museum Tree and Future Tree Ordinance.
Good evening. Thank you all for your time. Historically, I had been an arborist, although it was a long time ago. I am currently a design-build landscape contractor for the better part of 30 years. I would encourage the city council, some of whom I've spoken with, to either rescind or at least allow a little more time to take place before there's an elimination of one of the two trees. I had seen where there was a press release, I think two weeks ago, that the elm was deemed to be cut down, and from what my understanding is, having spoke with quite a number of different credible people within that industry, is that there is not a rational reason for that. I had also suggested some ideas to Mr. Marshall about being able to create a geotextile sort of a diversion barrier between the adjacent property owners. They're not real costly. They're sort of similar to what they use in driving ranges or batting cages, just so that some of the leaf litter, because I think that's the crux of what's taking place, is that the adjacent property owner doesn't like that he bought a piece of property next to two trees. And lastly, in the near future, I have spoken with a number of city individuals through the last two decades about perhaps entertaining a tree ordinance for the town. It could be a tiny revenue stream for the city, and I think that it would prevent indiscriminate removal of materials that are an asset to the entirety of the community. Breed shade, filtering of air, increased humidity, a lot of the gifts that are trees. So thank you for your time.
Thank you. And the last individual to sign up was Mr. Turieta, the TIF and the MRA.
Thank you, Mayor, Council, persons. I would just like to give a small report. We started doing the field visits on the revaluation of the downtown area, and we're in the process, we're about 50% field visit complete, and we have been picking up, you know, valuation. Will probably be done by the end of September, and I'll have a full report on valuation and on how much field visit we have done. We just received a tax rate, I'm checking them out, and the county commission will actually approve it on this Thursday. Once they approve it, I will disclose all that information to the town council and also to the newspaper. So Thursday, they're going to accept that. One thing I would like to say, I went and spoke in front of the, in Santa Clara, their town council in Santa Clara, and they're in the process of wanting to create an MRA downtown area. I gave a small explanation, so it's getting a little bit, you guys started off, and I think you guys did a great job, and I think it's going to be a positive thing. So as time goes on, I'll come up with the values. Right now, we're looking at about $50 million in value on the taxable side, and once we get the numbers on that, I can come up whatever, whatever we come up after the revaluation. Okay? Thank you very much, Mayor, Council.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is council comments. I'm going to take some liberty and start off by congratulating a couple of our councilors. Counselor Bedesen was re-elected to the municipal league as an at-large director. Congratulations. And Counselor Conno became our second certified municipal official. Congratulations. It's, it's always good that we have a very, in municipal government, we have a very educated council. I, I know I've taken most of those curriculum, as has Counselor Ray and Counselor Raymond Smith has taken some courses, so we're, we're very informed in doing our job, and thank you ladies for continuing to advance yourselves. And with that, I'll move on to the council. Counselor Bedesen?
Thank you, Mayor. I want to also congratulate Counselor Conno on completing and getting her certified municipal official, very nice plaque and pen. It's exciting when you saw that there were 30 graduates for the first time, and we really have a lot of interest in moving forward and folks being, becoming certified across, across the municipal league. It's an incredible opportunity to, as you already noted, for education and continuing education, and I know that, I think both Counselor Conno and I plan to go to some upcoming continuing education through the Municipal Official Leadership Institute. I also want to congratulate our town clerk on becoming the president and beginning in October of the Clerks Association. So for one year, he'll be representing all of the clerks on the municipal league board of directors. We have on the board of directors a number of associations that are represented, including our attorneys, our managers. It goes through judges, I mean, it's, it's a long list, and so that's what makes the municipal league's board of directors so comprehensive and able to really concern itself with legislation that impacts all of our municipalities. And I have to say that we also gained a new municipality with Kirkland becoming our newest municipality out of 100, we now have 106 municipalities in the municipal league. And I want to also thank the mayor and everyone in the league that were voting delegates for re-electing me to the position. I'm looking forward to continuing to serve Silver City and our citizens, as well as Southwest Region and Southern Region, and all of the other municipalities that are on, that are part of the municipal league on the board of directors. So I thank everybody here on, in the town for their support, especially all the folks that were there. We had a lot of folks from the town. And the opportunities that they gave at the convention for, there's some great breakout sessions for us to learn about what was going on and what's coming up. Lastly, I want to wish Counselor Conno a happy belated birthday. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Raymond Smith, still with us?
I am with you. Can you hear me responding?
Yes.
Okay. So I do have one quick comment, if everyone can hear me, which is, I am on the East Coast, I'm in Hoboken, New Jersey, and let me tell you, I really miss the peace, quiet, and the weather in Silver City. I know that sometimes people talk about how loud it can get in our town. Let me tell you that it is absolute stillness compared to Hoboken and Manhattan. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Ray?
Thank you, Mayor. Happy birthday, and happy birthday. Um, I'm going to make a few comments that I made probably about a year ago. I want to pursue, if possible, with the town council behind it, the mayor and staff, and Mr. Scabran also, of our territorial charter that we had once had here. This charter was in effect, and it was legalized gambling and legalized ladies of the night. I would like to see it bring back, to see how far we can go with this. Due to the mining, they're, they're planning to shut down or lay off people, I think it would be a good opportunity to, to, to look into it. We could probably create some jobs, we could probably have a better infrastructure, facilities, more people to be employed by the city, numerous things, numerous things. I would like to know why, or who, or when it was taken up from here from Silver City. I know that I'm going to step on some people's toes, I know that some people are going to like it, and some people are not going to like it. But I think that sometimes we have to think outside the box to protect ourselves. Sometimes we cannot always count on the mining. They're like a, like a yo-yo, for lack of a better word. Also, another thing is that we, the town council, we don't like to raise taxes on people, especially because we're all on a bunch of fixed income, and if we don't do something for our town amongst ourselves, I think we will fail. If we, we only fail if we don't try. If we succeed, even if we fail. I would like to ask Mr. Brown and to Chief Reynolds also, that due to the things that are happening in America with the police department, if it's possible, if it's very possible, feasible, to have two police officers being in the same vehicle going through town or protecting, protecting that town, let's try and eliminate a problem that could be, could be a dangerous situation. And, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Conno?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This month is Hispanic Heritage Month, and as a part of that, there's going to be a celebration this Saturday called Fiesta de la Gente. It's a benefit for the Forgotten Veterans Memorial Park. It's going to be a mariachi concert featuring Ballet Fofolico from Las Cruces, and it'll be shows at 2:00 and 7:00 at the Fine Arts Auditorium, and the price is $15, and all that money will go back to the Forgotten Veterans Memorial Park, so hopefully many of you will join us. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Anybody need round two? Moving on, approval of minutes. Counselor Bedesen?
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve the minutes of the regular town council meeting of August 25th, 2015.
Counselor Conno?
Mr. Mayor, I would second that, just to give the motion I see.
We have a motion, second, to approve the minutes of the regular town council meeting August 25th, 2015. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is under reports, staff reports. Mr. Brown?
Mayor and Council, as you know, every year, it's required that once our budget is approved or denied, it has to be read into the minutes that our budget has been approved. So it's just a formality to move on for the, for the rest of the fiscal year. And secondly, because of the layoffs at the mines, I've been going through budget and working with some of the departments. Next year, I'm going to start working with them a little bit more in depth, and we've already identified some, some openings that we're going to keep frozen for a while until we see what's happening. We're going to look at some other departments and see if some positions are necessary or where they can cut back. But I just wanted to let you know that we, we are working on that, and so we ensure that we don't get in any trouble.
Is there any questions for Mr. Brown? Any other staff reports? Moving along, under new business, approval/disapproval, Resolution Number 2015-22, format change as requested by the State of New Mexico Department of Finance and Administration, Local Government Division, relating to budget adjustments for fiscal year 2015. Mr. Brown?
Mayor, this one is pretty much embarrassing to bring it to you guys, but for the last 15 years that I've been doing it, we've been doing, doing it in this exact format that we presented to you earlier. As you can see, the budget adjustment is pretty much self-explanatory. Each, each line item to the right explains exactly what we're doing, but they wanted to show, want us to show a monetary format. So for the negatives and the positives, we, we had to include that, but they wanted your concurrence to move forward. Everything's been approved, but they just wanted you to see that.
Any questions for Mr. Brown? Counselor Bedesen?
Thank you, Mr. Brown, for explaining it, but I just want to state that I wish that my checking account would be like this, that if I removed $20, that it would actually add money, the way they have changed it. I think it's clear that the individual that reviewed this understood that if it was $0 already, that if money was transferred, that it remained in a positive, but there appears to be a problem when it comes down to taking the approved budget and taking money out, withdrawing money. In some respects, some of them have been changed into positives, and that doesn't make sense to me. The way we've always done it is clearly the way most budget folks do it, with items that are being reduced that are in parentheses in red.
What we'll do is we'll continue to provide you with it in the same type of a format, since it's, it's what you, you worked with, but when we, the document that is sent up and signed by the mayor will be in this type of a format. We're going to give them whatever they want in whatever format, but what you see is, what you get is what, is what we approve.
My only request is that we keep the documentation all together so that when our auditor has to go through an audit, that they can understand and to provide the audit that will then be turned into state, that if there's any, I know this is the Local Government Division, but I'm afraid that there might be none on our part, but somehow down the line, it'll be misunderstood exactly what was done, because this format is not to standard accounting. I mean, it's not the standard subtractions and additions.
Well, when we're audited, we work directly with the auditors, so we'll explain exactly what, what occurred. So I'm not really worried about our auditor understanding it, because the auditors, once they put their audit together, it's all in the same, in a standard format. So I'm not really worried about, about that happening.
Well, I hope that we can work with the Local Government Division a little bit more to make sure that things in the future stay in the, in the standard budgeting format.
Well, next month we'll have a new analyst and you'll go back to it.
Okay. Thank you.
I'm sorry.
No, I understand. I just, I was just really, I was very surprised, because I don't think this has anything to do with what our folks in the town do. This has everything to do with what our analysts require. And I'm just saying that I fully support what this staff had provided to us. That was the accurate way to do these budget adjustments and the budget itself, so, thank you. Thank you to the staff. Thank you.
Any other questions for Mr. Brown? Counselor Raymond Smith, are you good?
I'm good. It seemed to me it was just a format change.
Yes. And from my experience in this last few years, no matter how nonsensical the state seems to be, just go ahead and do it. So I recommend approval of this. I'll entertain a motion. Counselor Bedesen?
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve Resolution Number 2015-22, format changes as requested by the State of New Mexico Department of Finance Administration, Local Government Division.
Division, relating to budget adjustments for fiscal year 2015.
I'll second it.
We have a motion second for approval of Resolution Number 2015-22, format changes requested by the State of New Mexico Department of Finance and Administration, Local Government Division relating to budget adjustments for fiscal year 2015. Is there any further discussion? We have a motion second as read into the record. We'll call.
Counselor Bedesen?
Aye.
Counselor Amon Smith?
Aye.
Counselor Ray?
Aye.
Counselor Conno?
Aye.
Motion carries. Counselor Bedesen?
Mr. Mayor, I move to adjourn.
I'll second it.
We have a motion a second for adjournment. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We are adjourned.